Going to call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. I'm hoping that that is our Jen minutes clerk on the on the meeting virtually, and if everyone would please rise for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Um, I do have a request because Betsy is under a time constraint. If we could make an amendment to the agenda to have her come on as one A so that we don't skew the whole rest of the agenda. Um, so she can give us some update with regard to uh what's changed with the state and our grant list and such. Um, so may I have amended to adjust the agenda to add Betsy please? Uh, second?
Sure.
Thank you. I get it. Before it's yours, please let us know where we are.
Okay, so um, this is a quick report. There was a House bill in front of the legislature. It was House Bill seven zero six seven, which was impacting a hundred percent totally disabled veterans as well as the way we price motor vehicles. That bill has been signed into law by the governor. And these are, I'm here before you to give you a few things to let you uh think about. One is mandatory, but the other one is a local option and must be enacted by the the body of the municipality. So that is why I'm here in front of you people, because you were the ones that are that are going to make that vote.
And Betsy, I'm sorry, could you just give me your last name?
Quest. Q U I S T. I'm the assessor.
Thank you.
So the first part of House Bill seven zero six seven uh was about permanently and totally disabled veterans. And if they were a hundred percent disabled, the original bill came out without the hundred percent disabled in it. It just said permanently and totally, which opened that up to additional veterans who had eighty, ninety percent, but they were considered permanently and totally disabled under the rules of the Veterans Administration. They have now since re- redacted that, and they now want it to be only one hundred percent permanently and totally disabled veterans. There was a question that was sent to Representative DeGraw about if somebody was ninety percent disabled, but was considered a hundred percent disabled because they were unemployable, and would they be eligible? And the answer was no. So you must be one hundred percent totally and permanently disabled. We presently have twelve of them, twelve hundred percent totally and permanently disabled people that we put on our grand list.
How many can you?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
And we have to remove three of them because they do not qualify, which results in us adding back about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of assessment to our grand list based on that.
Based on the three?
Based on the three, because they were getting their house assessments off at zero.
Okay.
Yeah. The second part of House Bill seven zero six seven is a local option. I have to start by explaining a little bit about how we had to price motor vehicles this year. It was a little different than you would take their current value, take seventy percent, and that's what you paid your taxes on. This year, they decided that they were going to go to the MSRP. So for example, if you own a two thousand seventeen vehicle, I would have to find your MSRP from two thousand seventeen. Then they started with a calculation of eighty-five percent of that. And then you would get five percent per year that you skewed away from the current assess mid-year, which is twenty twenty-four. So you'd get twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen. So you get an additional thirty-five percent off of your MSRP that really would be fifty percent times a point seven. Thank God we have computers, because that helped. The local option is to raise the beginning percentage to ninety. One reason for that is almost every municipality had a negative motor vehicle grant list this year. Um, so they must have gotten a lot of pushback at the legislative level. Um, so that was their solution to try to give everybody a five percent up tip. It's not really five percent because it's not literally across the board. They said to plan for four, and if you get a little bit more, once we finish the process, you will know. There is a time issue in this, because it, we have to notify OPM fourteen days after, if it's approved, and then it must be completed and enacted by the fifteenth of April. What that means is if you approve it, vote for it, we have to notify OPM, which gives us a permission to open back up our grand list that we signed on the thirty-first of January, redo all our motor vehicles, and then sign it again, file it again with the state, and then make sure that the finance department has it for budgeting purposes.
So did you give us the date that it had to be implemented by?
I don't know, because you guys haven't voted on it.
I'm saying if we did.
If you voted on it, it has has to be by the fifteenth of April.
Okay.
Because they gave you forty-five days from when it was voted on. So, but, okay, we'll say the eighteenth of April.
So what exactly is your motion?
Well, my motion is letting you know that if you enact it, potentially it would add another uh fifteen, one point five million dollars to the motor vehicle grant list.
Okay.
Um, you know, that's more money. We unfortunately this year with the losses from all three categories uh with the veterans, our personal property, and our motor vehicles, we had a negative grand list this year. So obviously, it's a very difficult time for budgeting purposes. So any additional funds, I would guarantee, I would, I would say, yes, why would you not want them? The veterans is not a choice. The motor vehicle is a local option, but you would have to vote on that.
And then you're saying to the first year, you'd be at ninety percent of MSRP?
Yes.
Even first year being a new car?
So if your car was a twenty twenty-four, you'd get ninety percent, and that's it. But again, if you were the two thousand seventeen, you'd get ninety percent plus that additional thirty-five percent.
And if we don't do the local option?
If you do not enact it, you can enact it anytime further. It just wouldn't be for this grand list.
But what would it instead of ninety percent, what would the first year hurt?
Right now, we're at eighty-five.
Okay, so it's that's all the difference is?
That's the only difference, yes. It changes a lot of, a little bit down at the bottoms. That's why it's not you know, you have to make sure nothing drops below five hundred. That's the the minimum that anybody can pay awful.
Does the, does the act say that um the Board of Selectmen can approve it?
Yes, well, so if unless you are a town meeting town, and that's the only way that you bring in any type of local options or anything, the Board of Selectmen is the, considered the legislative body.
Do I have to see the language? Because sometimes the legislature just says the legislative body does it. And sometimes they say the legislative body has to do this, except if you have a town meeting.
It says, in order to enact this local option, a town must pass a vote of its legislative body. For in a municipality where the legislative body is a town meeting
The Board of Selectmen.
By vote, it's the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, they they do that frequently. Just wanted to make sure it was.
So that I'm making someone who costs and they declared.
Yeah.
So um.
How would we word the um the motion?
Okay, I'll let you rework it.
Well, you're basically going to have to reference House Bill seven zero six seven, and it's section that's section two, but let me just go back. Yes, it's House Bill seven zero six seven, section two, local option for motor vehicles to start their depreciation schedule at, beginning at ninety and end at twenty percent on your fifteen through nineteen. You want this just to?
Sure. Move that the town adopt the House Bill section seven zero six seven, local option, to begin the motor vehicle depreciation schedule at ninety percent.
I think we need to add one extra point to that, Bob.
Okay.
For grand list twenty twenty-four, to be specific, to to allow us to go back and add it in to re- to reopen this grand list year.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Can I have a second?
I'm just skimming the bill really quickly. Just just need one more minute. Okay.
That was second. Okay, um Gina's second, just so you're aware. Okay, any other comments or questions for Betsy regarding the books?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Bye. Hi, okay, let's see when we can work on opening up the grand list and doing the magic.
Yeah, we have to notify OPM first. And we can work on that.
Do you have a new notification?
It doesn't say, but I will, I will, okay, double check with that. Okay.
All right.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, uh, thank you for accommodating that she has to be in prospecting about two minutes, so.
I was confused at first. I wasn't sure if she was on the agenda.
No, that's why we made the amendment to add that, because she had notified.
I never just moved.
Right, I thought we were moving something.
Yeah, she had notified me. So it was uh, I wanted to make sure because of her her time constraint with our next meeting. And we can make sure she had the time to do it.
She's one A, right?
Yes, we'll make her one A just so that we don't skew the rest of the um uh the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, the next one with the tip, actually, Ben is doing a little more research on this piece uh with regard to uh, because there's a dual ownership with the property, so he just wants to verify.
Is this number two?
Uh, yes, that is number two, sorry.
Okay.
So that basically, we're going to hold on to that until next month when he has more information.
Is he looking at, or would the finance board look at the question I had when you read our ordinance? It seemed to say the personal property, I believe for personal property was said manufacturing only.
We can, we can double check that.
Yeah, so it looks like when we passed our ordinance in two thousand and six, the statute's only allowed the personal property under that section for subsequently, the statute allows uh wholesale and retail businesses. It was added, I think, in twenty fourteen, but we didn't change our ordinance. So the question would, so the statute now would allow the personal property abatement. But our ordinance says manufacturing only, that's
that's one of the ones that will get that has to be.
Does the statute trump it, or the fact that we didn't put it in means?
I ma- I made a note, so we can certainly follow up on that.
I I wasn't here at the last meeting. Was this item on on the agenda before?
The packet was here, but I, the process is, we decide if we're even interested. If so, then we send it to the Board of Finance and the Assessor, who are together a committee.
Yeah.
And they work out the numbers, and they come back, and then we approve.
They make a recommendation back to, it kind of bounces back and forth.
But it's more, I remember what Lethley did it with um, when they booked their headquarters.
And we've done it with Greekers well, and we've done it with um.
More traditionally, it's a um, a building, a building that's going to be taxable. So I'm adding to the grand list, and I'd like you to only tax me fifty percent if we increased them out the first year, and you know.
I think the max is thirty, and what they were proposing was thirty.
Yeah, and it phases out.
It doesn't have to be three years. It could be less than three years, but the, being that it was a brand new business that had come into town.
Um, yeah, I think.
Do you know what the schedule, the proposed?
It was, first year was thirty percent, second year was twenty-five, and third year was twenty.
And then those are not arbitrary. They're in our ordinance, depending on how much the property value increases.
Oh, yeah.
In this range, it's this much.
That's why the assessor and the finance, um, they, they kind of put their heads together on that and how they.
They fixed up that we're building, so we.
What's the business?
Uh, it's right there.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's right on the corner down across from Lotte Creek.
Okay, and so what happens in the fourth year?
Nothing. It goes back to there, right where they're, yeah, the bowl, the bowl, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, okay, so uh, like I said, Ben is just checking on a couple of things on that, and then we hopefully will be able to resolve that at the next.
Is is there any um, I guess, penalty, for example, if they've decided in the third, in the middle of the third year to leave town, like, is there like a, any kind of debt back to Bethany, or I think there's never been an issue with that.
There's some, the, in one of the sections, maybe on the personal property, there was some, there was something, but I don't know about the real estate. The real estate would the next, if somebody, the real estate, you know, I guess it would, it would still be taxed whether they left or not. Somebody's going to own the property.
What will happen is with the next meeting, when we both file approval, the the total agreement will be in the packet for you.
Well, could we get, so we get it more in advance?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as he can have it, yeah, absolutely. As soon as he has it squared away.
And what, Bob, can you repeat the issue that Ben was looking into?
Um, I don't know if he is looking, he's looking at something else.
Right, right, because there there are two owners listed, one personal property, one the property, so there's but we have to, we just want to make sure that it's listed.
And mine was, I think it was in the last, last month's packet, the ordinance.
I think I saw, I saw him, yeah.
People here. So with our, so only manufacturing facilities are eligible to participate in the benefits authorized under uh section twelve dash sixty-five H. Then there's a, then there's a schedule for its personal property. Depending on how much you have, you can get um, how much the abatement is and how many years. Then the table above it is a different statutory second. I think that's only talking about real estate improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that was my, you know.
Yeah, that was helpful, yeah.
And yeah, that's the only question is, are they eligible if they're not a manufacturing facility because of our ordinance?
Okay. We will, we will shut back in front, and maybe know the way. So. Okay, um, our next item is our solid waste committee, and Eric is here to give us some highlights.
Um, so in the meeting packet, uh, we provided a presentation of um, a lot of findings that we have. Um, I'm not going to look through all of that. Um, I mean, we're going to hit some of the the real highlights. If you have questions on that, I'd be to answer them. Um. All of the data that came from that either came out of um, the finance department, all of the excellently organized uh files that they have, or from uh the recycle uh center where they have a lot of information on car data and tires and such. So that's where all of the information came from. Um, apparently, we have a handshake agreement with the hauler, and um, it's actually our understanding that this is not uncommon, that handshake agreements are are something which are done frequently. However, it is incumbent upon us to, as a town, to make sure that we review that periodically to make sure that uh we're still working in the town's best interest. Um, after we review the data, um, there are some things that we really should be looking at, because I'm not sure that uh we are, things that we are doing are in the town's best interest. I want to give a few examples of what's going on and some ways that we might be able to alleviate those problems. So currently, um, our last three years hauling costs, which is the uh, the trailers being taken away um, have gone up between thirteen and twenty-four percent. Um, the commingle cost, commingle, I didn't see the plastics and tins, has gone up twenty-eight percent the last four years. Uh, mixed paper uh has gone up twenty-three percent the last four years. And both mixed paper and uh commangled cost more to get rid of than trash. So we're actually paying a premium to recycle. Um, none of the fee increases that we've seen have been negotiated. Basically, we get a new bill, and the price is higher. Um, scrap metal, uh, currently, we're getting just a few dollars a ton for that. We've talked to some scrap metal dealers, and they're willing to pay much more, uh, over a hundred dollars a ton and pick up for free. Uh, we're currently paying to have it picked up. Um, cardboard, we currently get nothing. Uh, spot price right now for baled carpport is seven seven dollars a ton. Unveiled, a little bit less. But uh, there's opportunity there. Mixed paper, we currently are paying ninety-two dollars a ton. Trash, we're paying eighty-five dollars a ton. Um, spot price for mixed paper right now is thirty-five dollars a ton. So there's a huge differential there between what we're paying and what we couldn't get. Um, probably the biggest issue is bulky waste. Um, so we're paying eighty-five dollars a ton at Bridgeport to get rid of our bulky waste, the best tipping fee. Right now, um, we're paying about three hundred dollars a ton for bulky waste.
Is that because it's a smaller amount than MSW is bringing in, like?
So what's happening is we have a fixed cost. Um, so they charge us eight hundred and forty-five dollars to take away the trailer, regardless of how much.
It's a hauling and disposal.
Hauling and disposal of that. But it comes out to be about three hundred dollars a ton, because we get between two and a half and three tons into into that um container. Um. So when you go through and look at it, on average, every time somebody goes up there to drop off bulky waste, it costs the town thirty-five dollars. So, you know, that's, you know, we shouldn't be, you know, because of the way we're currently set up, we should not actually be encouraging people be taking stuff up to bulky waste. We should be saying, stuff that into your, into your big bin, because that would be a lot more cost effective for us. Um, really, the, probably the the biggest thing is, we believe that uh, we should develop an RFP for all of our different items. There are a number of different companies that will bid on this, and uh we can, we could work much the same way as uh, we're currently working with a MOU or something like that, in order to just say, okay, you know, you're going to be our scrap metal guy, you know, unless you do something for it. But we've worked up, you know, what we think we should be asking for um in an RFP. Um, it would be up to to y'all to decide whether or not, you know, that's something that we should go forward with. But um, there are a lot of opportunities for both to generate revenue and save money on what we're currently doing.
Can you repeat that last part?
Um, how far back?
Well, you said there's lots of opportunities to.
There's lots of, there's lots of opportunities to both generate revenue, which would be selling scrap metal, selling cardboard, selling mixed paper, and also to make savings, which would be cutting costs in bulky waste and commangled and and paper. So, you know, there's there's cost savings on both sides. And there are others too, you know, depending on how aggressive we want to be, we can, you know, there are places that we can also, you know, have additional revenues and additional savings.
Yes, some of, some of the ones you mentioned, like the metal is going to be low hanging fruit, to use that term, whatever. It's uh, and then some of the other ones, maybe the hauling costs will go down, or the, you get a little bit down, but it it adds up. I don't, I don't see any harm in doing that. Just make sure that the, we can review. I think the compactors are not owned by the town. They're owned by the companies and the dumpsters themselves. Correct. So it's just something you have to put in, you know, because o- otherwise, if if you don't put it in, suddenly, when you fire the first guy, they'll all disappear, and like, oh.
So. So I'm developing some ideas for additional for what that RFP should look like. Um, and we'll provide that to you on concrete as well.
Is this, it's a draft?
Well, this is, I mean, it will be up to the town to actually put out the RFP.
Right.
We are advisory committee to the town.
Right, right.
We are providing you with what we think would be the appropriate thing to um, to put into an RFP.
Like the important information that should be included.
You know, what size container, you know, how are you setting your prices, you know, how how frequently will you, will you change it? Why will you change it?
What the specs would be, basically, which you're putting into it.
Yeah. So, you know, presumably, I mean, I would imagine that Ben would write the RFP. Um, you know, there might be one, there might be several, depending on the best way to do it is. We've also provided some potential people that it should be put out to, you know, because we know who collects cardboard. We know who collects paper. And, you know, let's, let's tell them that we're doing this as opposed to figure it out on their own.
Just to be clear, we're looking for an RFP on every single item as in the companies can bid on them individually. They could say this is what it's going to cost of all paper, this is what it's going to cost of all metal. But if you let us do these three, this might be, I mean, that'll be up to the company to say what they want. But we're looking for individuals, so we can actually uh discern, you know, apples to apples and.
I mean, that could be, that could be part of the spec where you could say, you know, you can, you can respond on these individual pieces, or if you have the ability to combine, you know, certainly submit.
There's numbers on them individually, so they would know how to compare.
Right. And and if I, if I, if I'm not in one business, or I could say, look, I haul, but I I don't want to deal with bulky waste. So you can put on, get on everything, or get on.
One, exactly.
Scrap metal dealers aren't going to bid on anything but scrap metal, you know, so.
Right.
Right.
But if, you know, but there are, there are a number of potential savings. And scrap, like you say, scrap metal is the low hanging fruit. I mean, that.
That'll be the highest.
That will be.
Because right now, we're paying to take it away and not getting my, for ten, ten points. Yeah, you'll make what you, what you estimate, like fifteen.
About fifteen thousand, yeah, differential.
Really?
Between, yeah, what we can sell it for, what we're paying now and what we can sell it for, yeah.
So why is it like this? Is it because nobody wants to think about this stuff?
I, I mean, we, we, you know, as, as I mentioned, we've been in a handshake agreement, and we've never really, or I don't know when the last time it was evaluated for, you know, is this what we should be doing? And I think, you know, as we talk to them, they say, oh, this is going great.
Right, of course, right, of course.
And, you know, at some point, we have to say, wait.
Because it's good for them. It's not good for the town, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for for doing this. Thank you for putting this together. It's really um useful information.
So what we propose is that, you know, our people out, and we uh, we progress from there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea. Um. Do you, um, I mean, does, do you want to take us down that?
I, I will talk to Ben. I'll show him this. There may be other towns that have RFPs with regard to some of this, that instead of reinventing the wheel completely, we can kind of pull um, out of a barn, has any, or um, Wallingford. I know Don, you know, who's somebody over in Wallingford that he may potentially could get some sample RFPs.
You can show your, your bit.
Oh, for orange?
Yeah, they don't do it exactly the same way, you know, they collect trash in ours, but as as well as.
You have a transfer station, right?
Yeah, at the, yeah, and um, they do curb cycling, but they do a lot of, some mix of a single stream at the uh, at the transportation, and they, they do separate cardboard and metal to make money. And then ours, our cardboard should be worth more because it's dry, it's compacted in that um, and um, yeah, I mean, I can consult with, you know, the the guys up there, because they may have input on, you know, they're, they're going to be most interested in, hey, when my thing gets full, I want to, I want to be able to call them and have them come and not have to tell everybody, well, that's closed now because they didn't.
Right.
I called them and they don't come for two weeks, you know.
Okay.
And responsive.
Yes.
I mean, I think a lot of these folks, you know, need to be very responsive. You know, the metal dealers that we talked to said, you know, call us, we'll either be there that day or the next. You know, is the cardboard the same way?
And there's also the, the educational component with the public, because they still I'm I'm sure there's recycled still being put in with the MSW and.
That's absolutely true. And I think that what, the first piece here is, we wanted to get our house in order before we told the residents what their house needs to look like.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
And, and you know, after the RFP is awarded and that any changes are made, you know, maybe good publicity that, hey, the town's making all this money. People may be a little more because honestly, for a while there, I mean, we didn't put in the paper, please throw your recycling away, but if the single stream recycling was the hauling class, it's cheaper to throw.
I think we have over two hundred households that have the recycling.
They're around two fifty, yeah.
Less than percent of the households in town, so. There are people.
Which makes it difficult to actually figure out what our overall recycling rate is, because we don't have that data of how much is actually being picked up and going to a recycling plant.
Right. Well, whatever it is, it'd be, it'd be a higher number, right?
Yeah, whatever our number is, you know, you can add a certain amount, but we don't. Yeah, whatever our number is, you know, they have a certain amount, but we don't know what.
We don't know what it is, yeah.
Is.
Because RWS is doing it as a, it's just, that's their business.
That's a separate.
They're not required to show up in Bethany with an empty truck and then when they get weighed in, it's all Bethany, they can pick up and.
Right, but but we are required as a town to provide our recycle numbers, and so there's, there's a gap here.
Guess you have to estimate it.
Well, I mean, we can, but I don't know.
That's why we talk to the state, they're like. Everybody does their number, but they don't even all add up because.
Right.
Right. Especially if you get like a a truck that goes between towns, when they arrive at the place they. They don't, the whatever place, the trash place, whatever, well, they they have to say, what town did you come from? And they, they pick a town, I was in West Haven, West Haven. Sometimes they get notifications. Uh. You know. From um the the waste facility in Bridgeport. Like they're required to notify if they get contaminated loads, too much recycling, and I'm like. Why are you sending this to me? It's, it wasn't from us. And I I I, and then to a picture of it, I was like, I have no idea. Which trash.
Before they take it away.
So it's just some kind of commercial hauler or something like that, and I'm like, okay, thanks for telling me, I can't do anything about it, and. It's just because the driver said orange to them.
Frequently, the driver, who gives them the best deal? You know, when they take it to a facility, if Beacon Falls gives a better deal than Bethany, they'll say Beacon Falls. Right, and so, so we don't know is the the answer on that.
Right.
Well, thank you, guys, we have this, so I will work with Ben and and Bob if you can share.
I will.
Samples of yours and um. See if Don can reach out to uh. I think it was Wallingford that we moved someone there, so maybe we can get a few samples.
So Paula, can we keep this on the agenda? Okay, it's just absolutely just to keep it on our radar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
For sure. Also, Eric, uh, it doesn't, do you have any other questions for him before we move on?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Too many.
Thanks, Eric, and the committee.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
The proposal sent to me last.
To everybody like.
Do you wanna take this just?
No, no, that's fine.
That's fine, I can make a copy of it tomorrow, but if she wants it. So.
I think this is really complicated and I just really appreciate the time and effort that's gone into this because you've given us information that we would not be able to get, right?
And the finance department has kept some really good records, I was gonna say, finance department has kept some really, really good.
That's great, too.
Records, too, so.
Now, the, I mean, the records have been really good, it's sort of easy to find everything.
Well, thank you for finding it, thank you for keeping it.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Okay, uh, public comments, is there anyone for public comments? Jamie, could you just put your name and I guess on the sheet down at the end of the table there, please?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Eric and the committee members for their work. Um, I was just reminded that in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, Bethany had a solid waste study committee that included Bob Britton Senior, I presume, at that point.
That's when they had all the trouble with the um. Superfine sites and they had to. They went to the curbside pickup because it's the only way they could control.
Yep.
Um.
Don't take from his public comment, I guess.
And um also on your comment about uh not knowing where the trash is, I'm reminded of Arlo Guthrie's Alice's Restaurant, where they found your name on the bottom of an envelope underneath the trash. Um. Um, uh, my comments are um. To express my disappointment, uh, it was about two years ago that a group of residents wanted to get involved in um. Uh, having a study of the municipal solid waste and the garbage pickup, not the recycling as much. Because there was thought to be significant savings in that RFP, having smaller bins for free and then buy up to larger bins. Um, they were told it was too early to do that study, um, to do, to be involved, and then the RFP went out and we got one bidder, our current bidder, and we were told it was too late. To be involved and make a change, and um, there's some some savings. I'd uh think that that might have been replicated with even more significant savings. Had this administration and the Republican Finance Board taken the effort to investigate something besides a new five-year contract with sixty-four gallons. And um, I just wanted to to point that out, that study, uh, resident study committees, these are people who are very concerned about saving the town money and doing the right thing for the environment. And we missed an opportunity then, and I hope that we can find a way to change course and maybe adjust this five-year contract midstream to do the right thing now.
And anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to our approval of minutes. Uh, first set that we have is the August twenty-eighth, and I think that was held over to Jamie, because you weren't at the last meeting.
Oh, thank you, I saw that, I appreciate that, I, you both were there and I just. Since you guys probably, Bob, since you looked at these, you know, for the last um meeting, I did look at the August and the October minutes, and I thought they were fine, everything's okay?
Yeah. Okay.
The only one I had a.
All right, well, let's do one of the, let's get, let's go through the August 28th first, um, may I have a motion to approve the August statement?
Twenty eighth.
But I mean, I'm sorry, twentieth, sorry.
I move.
Uh, second, okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, all okay, approved. Okay, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put, I'm gonna abstain from that vote because I was not at that meeting, so it will just be the two of you um for the approval, okay?
Okay.
Okay, and now we have the October eighth special meeting minutes, and I think that was um, that's the one. But I will see not. It was just.
Um, yeah, October eighth, right?
Yeah, October eighth, so uh, may I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second, any comments or questions regarding those? Hearing none, all in favor?
I.
I will put the two of you again, and then I will say. Okay, the October fifteenth, uh, special. Meeting units.
It was a typo, but I don't think I saw anything. In the, oh, really? Yeah, that's it, that's the only, yeah.
I was gonna joke like.
On the October fifteenth?
Uh, October fifteenth.
Okay, where, where we.
Executive session to discuss a draft retain.
Oh.
And then I was like. We may, we may have to wait, you know, till it's all done, or maybe we, it was a draft.
Okay, so we will make that, we will make that correction and um.
That's it, I, that's.
Did you have any other correction?
Okay.
Okay, as amended, all in favor?
I.
I'm Dave, Bob and Gina, and then I will abstain, but I will certainly make that correction.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and then we have the February fourth, uh, regular meeting, may I have a motion to approve?
I'm gonna abstain from that.
Oh, could you review it, okay. Uh, Bob, do you have any comments or questions with regard for that?
I had a couple, let's see. Please, no, that was the, that was the first one. Um. Item two, the first paragraph.
Two, first paragraph, okay.
And then the second sentence says approval was granted.
Okay.
But that doesn't really make sense, I think the um. Person who's taking the minutes. I think we must have voted to discuss it or something. Um, because then later on, we take a vote to refer to the board of finance, but then we should just start the approval as granted and. And and start with members.
Just take that and start with members, okay.
Where's that again?
The second sentence beginning, it says approval.
Okay, got it, got it.
Second line, so we have.
But then, but then we start discussing it, so I think it was.
But then it's the approval was granted, comma, and, and then capitalized members, um.
Okay.
From there.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Uh, I mean, I'm thirteen. Thirteen, hold on. There, there's a two motions in them. Yeah, so under policies and procedures. For the park and rec. Um.
You were looking at the motion pieces?
Yeah, so we had a motion. To approve it, and then we, and then it's approved, and then we made another motion to approve it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, wait, 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 though, was one, was one for discussion or?
It might, it might have been, but the way it's worded is. Uh, so maybe we just need the one at the end.
Okay, we'll take out the first one on the top.
I believe, otherwise they say exactly the same thing, right?
Uh.
Or, it's the first one to add.
No.
Let's see, one was probably for discussion, that should just go right at the beginning after thirteen, you know? I think we do that a lot.
So, so we'd say a motion was made by something then to discuss.
So I'll put that under the title of the. Right under the title. Okay, so we'll put the first motion there.
And then worded that a motion was made to discuss.
To discuss, okay, yeah.
And that to 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 approve it first and then discuss it later.
That to discuss. And then seconded by.
Then we discuss it and um.
Okay, and then the other motion is fine.
Yep, and the last one was under sixteen.
Sixteen.
Because on the last page.
Yeah.
Second, okay, so it's the. Second, second to last paragraph is.
Starts with the six million dollars, that one?
Uh, no, the the one under, the discussion also touched on the state's policy regarding surpluses, but that paragraph's actually talking about Amity School System. So it should probably say Amity instead of states. I think Amity is not gonna, it says they're. They're not gonna return the surplus that they're gonna apply, then they.
So the discussion also touched on Amity's policy regarding surplus, okay?
And then I think Sharon Huxley started to talk about. The capital project, all that whole paragraph.
Okay, so that's.
But there was it, but there was a change in. The rules regarding return of surpluses by the state. Which states that they don't have to return, regional school districts do not have to return the surpluses. And they no longer have to hold those for future capital projects, so it's, it's, so. Well, I, I, I understand, I understand that it, that it's, that it's confusing as it's written.
It may be fine, and then it all goes.
You know, instead of saying state's policy, it probably should say the state statute.
Well, yeah. But it's not just the.
It's not, yeah.
And it's um, certain board, board of board of ed surpluses, right?
Yes.
But both Amity and BCS.
Mm-hmm.
And then I guess the last line. I guess.
Well, regional surpluses are not returned. The local Board of Ed only asks for money from the budget as they need it. So that we do not give them. The money on a monthly basis, we give the mon, we give Bethany School the money on an, as expenses are cut basis. So payroll is transferred with the exact dollar amount of payroll, the AP funds are transferred with the exact amount of the AP.
Yeah. So basically, it will read the discussion also touched on the state's statute regarding surplus, regional.
Regional surpluses.
Probably regional school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, regional school.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Does that clarify it?
I think it's clarifies it a little. Because you're referring to the school, but you're also, it's a state statute, not state policy, it's a statute, so. Okay. Um. So can we get a motion to approve as amended? Second. I abstain. Oh, you're abstaining, I'm sorry, it's me, I'm sorry, that's right, you weren't there, okay, um, I second that, and all in favor, I. Uh?
I.
Okay, and then um.
Can I ask a question about the February fourth minutes? I did read them. I was wondering, there were a couple of two or three areas that um referenced documents that I don't have, so I was just wondering. I, I, first I want to ask if there really is a doc, document, or if it was just discussion, there, there was um. Public comment, um, guidelines or or rules, is that?
Oh, you know what, I have them, I have one here, I had some copies on my desk.
Oh, thank you. I think you said somewhere that you were gonna have, and so it, thank you.
And and I had the other uh piece too, too, because there were two uh portions, but that's the one I had on the table tonight.
Oh, so there's another one?
There's a different um, two-page one, so I'll get that one after the meeting for you, okay?
Okay, and then there was um. Uh, a couple of documents related to the parks and rec.
They, they were in the meeting.
It was in the.
Was it, okay, yeah, okay.
And actually, um. There were some changes we did make to the public comment, public comment, so what I will give you is the final version, that's it on the bottom, you'll see it says approved BOs.
Okay.
Um, with the data on it.
Yes.
Okay, and the other document has the same thing, so we have a record of when it was approved.
Perfect.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, we are now done with um minutes. We are moving on to tax refunds, I did give you a sheet with uh the tax refunds. And if I can get a motion uh to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second, okay, and Jen, just uh. For the minutes purposes, uh, I can, I will. Get you or I will fill in the the names and amounts um when you get the draft minutes, but the total amount for the tax refunds was three thousand five hundred twenty dollars and sixty-three cents. So um, all in favor of approving?
All right.
I, okay, uh, we do not have any cemetery deeds for this month. So we can uh move on to, uh, Bob, you had asked with regard to. Um. Ordinances, for the two ordinances, and fortunately, we have Will here, who is our secretary for the town code review committee, so and he's so fond with the town codes anyway. Um, I think he has them memorized, I'm not sure, but uh, he's very knowledgeable with the town codes and.
Things you guys.
I do, I do have.
And then uh, there's a couple of the copies if anybody wants. Um, these are just bullet points, and they're basically, I've been on the board for a bit over a year, and. You know, some things have come up that I've noticed that maybe could be improved in the future, so like. I didn't draft the whole word, it's just, if these are like discussion here, and if there's agreement on the board. Um, with. We would send it to the committee to look at further, um, I I suggested increasing the bid limit, because I haven't been raised in a while. And I think some people mentioned there is a statute. Would only allow us to raise it to twenty-five, but I think we should still do it, I would probably go a little bit more. We have, apparently it's policy, we have a quote limit, we should probably include that. Um, the last time they did a amendment, it might have been like in twenty twelve, they added a paragraph. It said stuff about um the state contracting website and the um. Internet and the town website and stuff, but they didn't change the first paragraph and said you have to put it in the newspaper, so they didn't really. They added more things, but they didn't get rid of the newspaper one. So my suggestion, and this isn't, you know, maybe is. You have to, you have, if you're doing a bid, you have to put it on the state contracting portal, which is free. And then the town website, which really isn't advertising unless somebody happens to be there. And then for most of these things that I'm thinking of, you also need, if you want to get bids, you also have to notify vendors, because. Big companies are gonna be registered on the state website and get the automatic notifications. But if it's smaller contractors or suppliers, if you don't let them know about it, you're.
They may not be looking in the paper either.
So that's just common sense, and then I would take the newspaper out as mandatory, which is a suggestion. And for certain bids, you may want to put it in the, oh, definitely bulletin or put it on Facebook, but I wouldn't make those mandatory. Those are just suggestions, they're really kind of taking the newspaper out of it, I don't think, I don't think most people read the legal ads. Forget the newspaper.
The state is still mandating for legal notices for some things, they still have to go in, very expensive.
And then, you know, so one of the things was, I know it came up with a trash bid, that the board of selectmen has no. We don't have any rule unless they're rejecting bids or waiting.
Well, here's the, here's the thing, when we went out to bid for the trash collection, we contacted a few companies to let them know. And only one company submitted a bid.
No, no, I, I'm with that, it was, it was just as an example of, I was kind of surprised that the board of selectmen. And I know we're writing checks out, um, wh- which has been over the last couple of years. A couple million dollars for all these grants and things that have come in, right, with the ARPA money and Rosa Del Toro and the. Uh, Senator Cabrera and Steve Grants and Lozep. Um, we write these checks out, but I, like, I, I assume that they. Are bid properly, because we never saw anything about them, or 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 that there was a bid waiver process or something. So I think we should be involved, and I go to, I have to go to the Orange Board of Selective meetings for any bids, and they. So I think we should be involved, and I go to, I have to go to the Orange Board of Select meetings for any bids and they move them, most of the time it's. We got ten bids, we want the low bidder, we don't think the low bidder is. Qualified for these reasons, and they make the, it's usually not a.
Right.
A big deal, and that should stay with what we already have, if if the board of selectmen does bid waivers. Um, I put in some language, but the town attorney should probably put it. When the board votes to either. To accept a bidder or waive bids, we should reserve the rights to just. So no bidders can contest anything if we decide to go with the third little bit, whatever.
Right.
We think in the, we we have to, we have to discuss it and vote it on it publicly, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, whatever the best interest of the town is. I know we're already getting notified of quotes, they're typically attached to the invoices, so that's. And um, there's already something about professional services not being bid. Um, which is fine, and then maybe if you're holding the bid amount, they should be like a RFP processor, RFQ. Um, but again, you're not, you're not just picking based on price. The second part was. If you remember, I had sent you that um legal opinion in two thousand and three on the town attorney, and it wasn't about how the town attorney, town attorney is. Selected or appointed because the town passed an ordinance, but the um. That third-party attorney that that they brought in municipal attorney. He basically said, if you don't have a charter, and there's no statute on point, and you don't have an ordinance on point. And he said, he went through these court cases, you know, Connecticut Supreme Court cases typically, and pretty much it was. My opinion is, if you go to court, you go all this up. And there was a dispute, it would be, it's gonna be the board of selectmen is the only one that has the authority to do contracting and hiring and um.
There was one.
Appointing, appointing. But just like with the town attorneys, like. But unless it's something that's prohibited by statute, which you might be able to change with the charter. You don't have to leave this ambiguity and potentially have people litigate and and go to the Supreme Court level to find out. Do you appoint this individual or not, like, why, why would you do that? You just, just pass an ordinance, which definitely give it a time of training. I, my thought was, we just put in like a sentence. A very short paragraph for each of these, and probably would go in chapter eighty, board of selectmen, it really doesn't belong in the purchase or whatever, it just says. Above a certain dollar value, and I just took bid limit, but it doesn't have to be that. Um, contracts would have to be approved by the board of selectmen. You know, authorize the first one, sign.
But you didn't provide a big limit though, right? Like a dollar amount?
Right now it's twenty, but it doesn't have to be, I just picked that number, because you 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 pick some line and say. Okay, first selectmen, anything less than that signs, doesn't have to, you know, so so you're aligned somewhere. Um, and then about employees. Do we hire every employee? I don't know that we'd want to, but maybe we say department heads, but there aren't too many. And then I know there's, there may be some, like basically town officers, like.
And some are elected positions.
Well, yeah, certainly, obviously not elected, but sometimes towns change and they have like appointed tax collectors, so. So any of those important positions should be. Officially appointed by the board of selectmen and, but then clarify. Everybody else would be, would not be hired, like we didn't, you know, hire every clerk, I mean. These are just throwing these out, it's like we should draw a line somewhere, or or make it clear. The board of selectmen hires everybody, or the first selectman hires everybody. And then clarifying the the board and commission, committee members, any non-employee town officers. Again, this is, if if there's no other statute of ordinance, then it would be more selecting, this is just to. So they don't have future disagreements and, I mean, I can imagine the town attorney wouldn't be able to represent either side. Right? If if uh. If if there was a dispute between just the board of selectmen or is the first selectman.
Right.
Appoint this individual or this office. The town attorney was like, well, I'm not the first selectman's town attorney, and I'm not the other member that. So you probably have to recuse, and then you bring in. Two attorneys and probably taxpayers are paying both sides of it.
Yeah.
And then if they're not happy with the superior for it, they go to appeal and it's expensive.
I guess I'm not real clear on how this would avoid that.
Oh, because. You wouldn't go to court if there's an ordinance, and we just settle it.
That's how the person's hired.
Who who has the authority, like a building official is appointed by the board of selectmen.
I think the the building officials are the P and Z, yes, no?
That was my suggestion, and just put it in the form. And if there's any. If there's general agreement, or if there's any modifications, and then we should send it to the.
I'd like, I'd like to send this to the town code committee, if you guys are okay with that, because uh. We're still in discussion of several. Um, and Will, didn't you say something on one of these? Because I had shared it with, I wanna make sure that we have discussion on it with the committee. And you had said something was already referred to in one of our other ones that we were uh talking about.
Yeah, there was, there were seven that the committee sent to the board of selectmen. Um, are, we're supposed to have a meeting, we kind of got. Delayed a little bit because there were some people that had conflicts, or a couple of people that are ill, so we didn't meet on the twenty fifth. We have three more. To send you that we had already agreed to in concept, but we hadn't approved the language, and they actually all kind of. Um, when we went through, we found some boards were appointed by the first selectmen, some were. By the board of selectmen, so we kind of said, I think board of select makes more sense, it's more consistent. It's public, it's in the minutes, it's. You know, permanent record, so uh conservation. Commission and Economic Development Commission, those ones we're proposing to change from. Uh, first election to board of select on appointment, and then the other one is ZBA, which is. Another inconsistency where vacancies on ZBA are appointed by the board of selectmen. While all the other elected boards are appointed by the remaining members of that board, and there was a feeling that we should be consistent with it. And have the remaining members of the zoning board of appeals. Um, so, so this, after we have our next meeting, which is the eighteenth, I think.
Uh, yes.
Then we would send that to you, and and we're, and there's a couple other ones floating around, Ben has one about signatures. On the financial documents. Um, so we're definitely cognizant of. Yeah, we can't load all these on the annual town meeting and have fifteen ordinances, in addition to budget and capital and all these other things, so. Where we're kind of.
For the most part, people are just ignoring them, well, I mean, I'm not, not some of the appointment ones, but they're not, they're not huge. Issues, like the world doesn't end if the first selectman appoints the economic development.
Right, uh, we do have these ones that were brought to us up on the website. And they put something in the, and we did put something in the um. So they're up on the website and we put something, I just, only part of it, I'll look inside. Uh, we put something in the bulletin so that the public can review. Uh, what's up there right now, and then when we bring those other three. We'll bring those forward to the board of selectmen at the final, the April meeting, and then we can pop those up onto the. Uh, website as well for continued review. And then what we do is, we'll have to prioritize, because if then we feel that there are some that are, because at this point now, we're already looking at April. The town meeting is the third Monday in May. So we're not gonna have a big gap to really. Keep it, I mean, we can keep adding on, we can keep adding to the website.
Things are not ready, then.
We have to prioritize if there are some that truly need to be approved at the annual meeting.
I think more are ready, it's versus, you know, on a four-hour meeting.
Right. Right.
Um, and the other, yeah, I know with some of the ones that were at the last meeting. There were just, I know we were gonna put it on the website for comments, but there were a few about. That that the list of town officers editing, that was captive, captive, you know. Certain point in time, and then that we don't have a sanitarian or a health director and a judge of probate would make no sense to. I dragged them over from Hamden to.
Yeah.
Um, so there were a few of those type of things, and then somebody else I think had made a comment. About the alarm section, there are some things were updated, but they're like, they don't even do that anymore, you know, somebody who knows about alarms might be like. There might be more that needs to be changed. And I I know, I don't know if you guys have tackled, but the. Previous times they looked, everybody's just stayed away from that whole solid waste. Section, it's so outdated.
We we kind of.
I think in the past, I think there was, in the past, and it was just like. That means so much, so much, it's not like, oh, you just change a few little things, it's.
Probably could be a lot less.
It was put in place, I think, back when they were still worrying about. Uh, making private haulers um register with the towns, we could control where they went, and that's, that's like decade, decades old.
State as well, so, a- and there were changes because it talks about twenty and thirty gallon. Uh. Garbage pails, and ours are ninety-six now or sixty-four, so there are some changes we can make, we we just started looking at it at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was quite extensive, so we felt it was best to put it in their hands, and then.
It's not some, some of the other ones you can just go through and say, oh, we don't have that anymore.
Right, well, then there were some that were just like, because we now have November elections instead of May, so it was changing. Yeah, so those were kind of.
So maybe it's longer process to.
Yeah.
Date everything.
The 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 final thought with that is. Again, we intended to do it at the February meeting, is is. Find a couple volunteers or twist some arms, to see if some, I I'm not a voting member of the of.
Nor am I.
The board, and and we thought like maybe two, would it be useful to have a couple of them come? Because there was, I know I watched the video from the last meeting, we had some questions about, and some of it was, you know, discussions that. We'd had, not to say it's right or wrong, but. Um, would it be useful for the board to have a couple of members from the committee come into the next meetings?
How much is on the agenda?
We're bringing some other cases forward to review, yeah.
Yeah, we we may have to do a special meeting if we're gonna be looking at a lot of ordinances and um. It's gonna take up a lot of time, right?
Yeah, we have to look at what we're bringing forward.
Well, you don't have to tell me, but let, before the eighteenth, if you let us know, then we can. At that meeting, pick a couple people uh to to come to whichever meeting you want.
I mean, if it's a question of should they come and talk to us, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we can put an item on there that's just um code review, you know, code review, just like with the solid ways, you could have, you know. So, we have it at the beginning, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make sure, uh Will, you have a copy of this, correct? And so I'm gonna make sure that that is part of our discussion. I'll put it on the agenda for the next uh. Next meeting. Because there, like I said, there's, we're kind of going through them. You know, in some kind of order, there's lots, a lot of work, so I do appreciate the time and effort that's coming in. Um. Okay. Uh, Simpson Property, we we are oh so close. I I I'm gonna have to have some kind of celebration when this becomes final, because this. Started even before I got into office, so I'm I'm looking forward to this unit on D O at some point. Um. Will, actually, we have you here, I did include in the packet the form and the list of the of. You know, events that kind of fall in the category, so I know you had had a couple of questions last time. With regard to the form and how they're.
One question came up, because considering you're a resident for at least a year, honorable discharge. Service ribbon or medal, and a recognized campaign. Um, and then there's a list of those. Um. And then later on, it says a list of wars and campaigns allowing eligibility for name placement. A circle of war, right, duty of service, how we sort of, we were just wondering, this is the honorable discharge, is that the, is that the paperwork? They have to submit their defense department.
It's generally the DD two fourteen, that that if. We would have on file in the town clerk's office. Um, anyone that's getting a veteran's benefit, that's the first step, is that to record that. And then we notify the assessors office.
Anybody who served in the military during these times, get a service medal or driven? Or is it only some of the people that goes?
I. I I spoke to uh.
Really, if you served during these time periods, you're eligible.
I I mean, I think it probably should be tweaked, because. I think in theory, you probably could have served, I mean, he was saying, even if you served, you know, and if you didn't go. Uh, if it was during Vietnam, but you weren't sent there, you were in Germany or or Korea or whatever, uh. There's other ways you could have a marksmanship one, but if if somebody didn't happen to have it, um, I think they had been. Um, considering them veterans, what they did here with the. Um. You know, having the list of, this is, this is pulled right, they mirrored what the the tax benefit. Uh, ones that get the veterans exemption. Um. And this is an actual one we just got. Um. So it's uh, you know, the veteran's name, they served in the Air Force during Vietnam, and then they, the engraver. They uh, we kind of mocked it up how it looked on the wall.
Oh, wow.
And so there's a certain formatting to it, where you have the uh, the name, the uh. Branches of service abbreviated, then there's a comment, whether it's Iraq or Vietnam or World War Two or whatever. Um, so that.
All of that goes on the, on the plaque?
This goes, this goes on the plaque, yeah.
It's a lot of information.
Yeah.
It's just one, just one line, right?
Oh, yeah, it's it's the one that's highlighted, it's the new.
I can't see it. That's why I was asking, because I couldn't see the highlight from here.
Yeah, and there's actually, there's actually some white space, if you get shorter names, we can fill them in here, they aren't in any particular order, it's just how they came.
So if you, if you serve in the army in the, but you weren't during one of the wars, or you're not eligible.
Right, and that's. I talked to John, I said John Riley about it a little bit, and I I asked if he'd be willing to come in, if you guys wanted to discuss it further.
Yeah, my, yeah, because it's like, they they wanna formalize the policy, and if we don't understand what the policy is. It's hard to explain if somebody else has a question, right?
The way, the way it's written, I mean, you you would have to. You'd have to resign Bethany for one continuous year, hon- honorably discharged from. Uh, US branch of service, which would be your DD two fourteen. And the service ribbon ribbon or medal and recognized military campaign or operation would also be on the DD two fourteen, but it would exclude. Um, that's that's part of what's, what's on there, and the ones that we see, it's, you know, um.
Okay.
You served in the Pacific.
Fourteen contains both of those pieces of information, then it's easy to.
Yeah.
So the uh, thi- this, this list here may not be. If somebody served in Vietnam, but they weren't overseas. Then they might not have.
Might not.
They wouldn't be on their form.
Right, now, that all being said, and I think it would be. Advantageous to have some of the former members of the VFW come in and and talk about it and what their feelings are. It's ultimately. Um, they're not involved anymore, they're defunct, it's ultimately back on the town. Um, they're the ones that own it, the historical society is just doing the paperwork essentially. Um. And. I mean, there there's holes here, if you serve from fifty-six to sixty. Between Korea ended officially January thirty-first nineteen fifty-five, and Vietnam was February twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-one. You could have served for five years, and you wouldn't be able to go on the wall.
Yeah.
You're in the gap, it wasn't your fault.
Did, because the the draft was in effect, so.
So that's.
You were serving during the Cold War, but that, that you're you're not eligible.
That's kind of a decision that maybe in talking to the veterans, you may wanna consider. Is maybe you throw this part out, and just say, you need DD two fourteen, this is you're a veteran, period.
Right. This is looking for more active service, apparently, looking at these timeframes.
Yeah, they mirrored. The what the state says for tax benefits, that's what they use as criteria, but we don't have to do that.
Right.
Um.
Right, we could just say, we're gonna honor someone who lives in the town, right?
And the other thing too, it hasn't come up, but it could, what if someone says, I will, you know, this goes back to Spanish-American War. Um, but what if somebody says, I want civil war, revolutionary war, it's the veterans more in parks, you're saying, I can't put my great-great-grandfather on there? No one's asked, but.
Gotta come up that often, but.
But some people might wanna do that, and that's something you may wanna consider if they.
Yeah.
Uh, ra- rather than we have to wait, oh, we gotta go to the board of selectmen and change the.
Right.
And they'd have to prove it, there there wouldn't be a DD two fourteen in the Civil War, but there are records.
So Iraq and Afghanistan are with doing this thing, it says, from nineteen ninety or two thousand and one to present, so.
Anyone. Anyone that served nineteen nineteen ninety to present is automatic, yeah.
So you're gonna have a lot more eligibility.
A lot fewer veterans, but yeah. So, again, is this something you wanna? I'd wanna give them a heads up, or Paul can't reach out to him, but.
And it's convenient for them to come in like.
But I just wanted to give you a little background on it.
Just like, is the way it's written good, or are they, you know, is the service, that's why I don't understand, the service medal or ribbon? Or is this list, does that replace that?
It it's like an added thing.
And of course, it was the VFW, so it wasn't the, it wasn't the V. Veterans of uh AP duty domestically, right? Maybe, I don't know, maybe they don't care, maybe they would let everybody in.
Yes, uh yeah, ultimately, it it falls back on the town, it's what criteria do you want for the Beth- Bethany Veterans' Wall of Honor?
And you say they mirrored this from the VFW?
Uh well, from the uh from. Because this is the exact same list, which is in statute for getting a uh tax tax uh credits. For being veteran. Um that's why they have those, so if if, because right now, if you came in and you didn't serve, you fell into one of those holes.
Right.
In the fifties or in the eighties, um then you wouldn't get all the benefits.
Right.
But but again, that's.
That's separate from this.
That's, this is just, this is paying to get your name on the wall.
Right.
So you don't have to follow this, they just did this as a criteria, which is.
So what criteria did they use before that statute was in effect, you know?
What do you mean?
Because I'm 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 guessing that the that was this. In existence prior to that um veterans exemption.
No, no, that, because the the Veterans' Wall was like, what, two thousand and three or something like that.
Okay.
Um so this, this has been, you know, ob- obviously, it goes back to Spanish American War, which gives you, and so when they wrote this statute, there were still Spanish American War veterans walking around. But giving you an idea, I don't know what exactly what year, but it was a while ago.
Okay.
But somebody, somebody might come in and they've got their dad's um. Discharge papers and he served in World War Two or Korea or something, and he's not even alive anymore, but I I'd like his name on them. And the two hundred dollars just covers the.
It's a pass through, which just covers the cost.
Okay, I mean, that's not really big deal, like, keep doing what you're doing for now.
Thank you for giving us background, so we don't, so we see, we appear to know something.
I had questions last month, so I was like, well, you know what, let's let's get some.
It would be helpful if the veterans came who. To more closely say when they were managing the wall, what what their policies were.
Or is there something that they would have done differently, right? Because if we're talking about it and we can do it.
Right.
In a way that's.
I think this was, I think this all came up because we were basically just trying to solidify what the process was and to have it on noted on record.
It it was an informal handshake between the, when the veteran said, we're, because they gave the the materials up at the lodge, they. Gave ownership of that, those artifacts to the historical society, and said, oh, by the way, can you also handle this? You know, occasional, because you need a checking account for the money to go in and then go out to pay the engraver. But we realized it really should be official through the town.
Okay, wonderful, we'll 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 put them on next month's uh. So, okay.
Thank you.
Uh the next item. Is uh the installation of a cycle service bike repaired kiosk. Um as proposed by the Economic Development Committee, and I did put something in the uh packet, it was the email from. Uh Sue Winter, who is the chair of the uh committee, so um.
Might have to Google them, what is a bike repaired kiosk? And I guess with that dollar amount, you're looking at a. A thing that kind of sticks up in a cylinder, there's a stand off of one side, frequently with an air pump. And then some tools that are attached by cables so they don't steal them.
You're correct.
I mean. I I I can see, I I I, and when I Googled it, came up like Bridgeport, so then the electric, some cities are putting them in a different places. Or how many people, I mean, you have to have your bike break down when you're close to this.
We do get a lot of bikers through Johnny, but I mean, you know, I mean, I think what got. What was the attraction for bikers to stop is Billy was open, you know, I mean, so they, that was kind of a local point.
Right.
Um but then, I mean, there are bikers that.
Yeah, maybe, so they want to put their operating budget into that, I don't have a, we can see what the usage is. But I mean, again, like if you get a flat tire on the outside of town, it doesn't do you any good.
No.
So a lot of people carry their own tools and um. And of course, it doesn't have parts, so it's not gonna have a spare tool, but maybe they have a patch kit or, I don't know.
I mean, the the need for this or the benefit must have come from somewhere, right?
Like, I mean, I think they're putting in cities that have way more cyclists, right?
I mean, I've biked through Bethany, like long before I lived here, when I used to have an issue. Sometimes you get those those biking groups that, you know, do those uh twenty miles, thirty miles, fifty miles, you know.
And maybe like getting to that spot would be.
I mean, if they know it's there, it might be, you know, they may want to check the air in their tires, or they may, you know, um. I'm not a cyclist, so I, you know.
But it doesn't get a lot of use, and then people are like, oh, the air pump doesn't work or anything, rip it out and throw it away.
So um they do have the funds available for the one. So and they they'd want to put it in the most logical spot at this point would be up near the BAA athletic fields. So I'm just going to have a motion to give them.
I could go either way on it, I kind of think it's like, I'm not sure necessarily, but.
I you know, I I think it makes me wonder, like, they must have talked about it and thought that it was uh.
They're putting in for grand, they're gonna put in like two locations.
I mean, I think if they were asking for like twenty thousand dollars, I might have, you know. But.
They're saying we want to use the rest of our budget for that.
Yeah.
Well, I I have a little extra information to review. Um there are some definite cycle groups that. Do go through town on a regular basis. That was one of the reasons for doing it. And the other, the other reason why it's coming before you is because they are a commission. They do, they do not have a direct employee report. To approve the spending of the money, other than me.
So they would, so they want to, they want to do this, right?
They want to do this, they 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 feel as though the need, they feel as though the traffic is there to warrant putting one in.
I I see.
And I I just want, I just wanted the additional endorsement that is okay to spend. The money in their budget to do this as opposed to something else, because it's not. It's not exactly, it's an indirect economic development. It's the anticipation of bringing more traffic through town. So that they see what else is within the town.
Particularly supportive if there was something like Billy's with ice cream and.
Correct.
Right.
Again, yeah.
Right, well, the diner is right there too, so I mean, there still is an attraction for.
And the whole process for this did start while Billy's was still open.
Right, right, right. And hopefully eventually something else will be there to be an attraction.
Yeah, and I know Amity Bike used to do the, every Saturday morning, they. Or they do some afternoon ones, but yeah, they go up Route sixty nine, go forty two, and go sixty three back to. Any bike area version, which is a. Some some hills.
Someone want to make a motion for their blessing?
I'll get their motion to to approve the request that they made.
Okay, Bob seconds, okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Did you vote?
Did I vote on this?
Yeah.
I'm gonna vote yes for it.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, I was just wondering because. Um I just wasn't sure if you were in agreement or not.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 absolutely.
Okay, great, that's great.
Yeah, so uh we're, it's a unanimous vote to approve the um installation.
Yes.
Okay. All right, fantastic. Uh the next one, uh still, we, Vin and I were still kind of checking on. How to sort of address the inside use, you know, because it's not any. Formal group that wants to use it, so I don't know what the liability would be through the town unless there's.
I know some places we go and there's a, there's a basketball hoop and you just bring in a basket and shoot at it.
Right.
I guess you're supposed to leave if somebody else had reserved the court, but I don't know about inside, I I would think. No, you you need to apply for it, and like you said, it's a a home um.
Well, yeah, one of the, one of the requests was for of homeschooling.
But there's, if we want to be in there to do our PE stuff every Tuesday, then make a reservation, and if there's a fee that's appropriate, pay the fee and.
But that's the thing.
Sign a waiver, uh instead of being like, I I just want to be like, nobody knows I'm there, I just want to show up.
But that's why I want to make sure it's covered properly.
Like you said, if there's a bunch of guys that want to shoot baskets, have them reserve the time, right?
But sign a waiver that, you know, right, yeah.
Don't have to form a corporation, right, but. Somebody, so they'll have to put it in somebody's name, I'm signing, I'm reserving the room for me and also my my friends.
Yeah, so I I just want to make sure we do it properly so that, you know, everybody's kind of protected.
Well, this this on the agenda reminded me that I've been meaning to ask at a regular meeting, but then, you know, it gets late and it gets missed, I. Um thought of it because of um when you say, you know, liability, like there could be, right? Like it, we should look into, you know, all aspects of this, but um I think it was some months ago, I don't know. Some months ago, I asked um for a copy of the uh insurance, that the, a copy of the policy, you know, the the. Carrier that we use and the language in terms of the whatever coverage we have as a town, um and I think I got. I got it, but only part of it. The document is not. Yeah, I think so, yeah. So the document isn't complete, it seems like I I was given like an addendum, but not the full document, so. Okay, because I was just thinking as a board, it might be a good exercise to to look at that document if we have it in one.
Because usually the first page, right at the beginning is great, we shall cover all losses.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it is all the exceptions.
Yeah, it that's not, I I don't, I definitely don't have the full document, so I think I have a a.
Yeah, be good to look through and just make sure there's it. Uh as a requirement of the insurance, the people have to sign waivers or whatever they need to to do instead of just.
I just want to make sure it's done properly, just to protect everybody.
Yeah, I think everybody.
I think in Orange, that that old school that has the gym. I mean, I suppose somebody could come in there in the afternoon and, you know, we stopped some, they should, but for the most part, you're gonna reserve. Whereas I think outside on the basketball court, you just.
Well, it's open, nobody's really, yeah, exactly.
Different sometimes. I know the tennis courts, they require. Reservations, I suppose if you, that they're not locked, so you can slip in there, but somebody comes over and says, I. Look, I got the reserve, I I already reserved it for one block.
Yeah, so maybe we could look at the policy and maybe have a conversation about it, okay, that would be great. And it could be in the context of this uh agenda item, I think that would be fine, you know, and if other things come up from our review, then we could figure it out then.
Leslie, bring us.
Um this deep grant, we are. About sixty five percent complete with the construction of the building. And the pay, most of the paving work is done, they will have to do some spot work around the building when it is finished. Um everything has been monitored by the architect and the building officials. And the DeLoro Grant, we are. Installing the sound system and acoustic panels in the gym. We are waiting on the laptop to come in for presentations and some other work, but it is. On its way, there are at least four of the acoustic panels on the ceiling right now. Um so we are progressing, we are moving forward with that, and that is, as as everyone knows, that's a reimbursement grant. So we do work, we wait for reimbursement before we move forward with the next phase. So we are in. And the priority for the second phase was to complete the gym. From the sound si- system standpoint and to finish the offices on. The left side of the hallway. Um the trip grant, we chose not to apply for this year. Um even though we were, you had endorsed resubmitting Round Hill Road, we chose not to. Because of the requirements on obtaining the grant, a match and funds and. The criteria that they are using to evaluate awarding of the grants. It would make the project way more expensive than it needs to be. And you run the, uh running the, since it is, there's only a portion of the road that is in Bethany. That you eventually hit Woodbridge. It didn't make sense to. Widen the Bethany portion for it to narrow significantly when you hit Woodbridge. So we looked at the holistic approach on it, um.
But did they change some aspect of what, of the grant, because I don't think you thought about this issue last time, right?
Well, um they, when we applied the first time, we were told that. We were the only rural town in this cog, and it would not make sense. For the state to award money to. All entities in one cog and not spread the wealth.
But they did.
But they did, well, they didn't, they didn't award it to just one cog, but we were, we did not, they did not share the wealth across all the cogs.
And we're supposedly supposed to be the only rural town in our cog that was eligible for it. And they they made us so hopeful when it was the first round, we were so excited, because they kept telling us. How, you know, we were the only ones that were eligible.
But most of the transportation grants that are awarded are looking for, safety is the number one concern. With the state, and it includes bike paths and pedestrian walkways. And it doesn't make sense to put either one of them on that road. Which kind of puts our application towards the bottom of the pile, so we are looking at possible. Work, regular road maintenance work and repair work on that road. We're just not sure what fiscal year it will show up in the budget.
But not addressing the narrow part or the.
Well, no, it would, it would, it would, um.
I don't think we'd be moving the telephone.
We would not be moving now, but we could be looking at the slope. At the one portion.
There's one part where uh you kind of can't see a car coming in.
The pitch, that's right, near Russell, near near Russell uh Homestead.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know when you're trying to pull out, you can't.
And and if you go down that road, because I happened to travel it the other day, those telephone poles. Are like literally on the edge of the pavement. I mean, if someone's coming at you from another direction, you potentially could use just lose your side view mirror if you're close to one of the poles.
So the, I mean, the road is constantly being evaluated by public works. And right now, we're just unsure the path forward. We're still working on.
If we have to do it ourselves, we could make some improvements.
Correct.
But they're not gonna make, not not the thirty foot. Right, right away, all that stuff.
Right, right, yeah, so, yeah, we just, we're gonna look at it a just a little differently.
And it will decrease the cost. You know, what uh what other, whatever plan is developed and designed, it will not be, you know, the half a million dollar project. That the trip grant looks for.
Well, half a million, that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, you know how the state works, right?
Yeah, and that's all I have.
All for those? Okay, um I would like a motion to move into executive session. And I'd like to invite Leslie and the members of the Park and Rec Commission that are here tonight. Um so I will be putting the meeting on uh the recording on pause and the audio and the video on. Shutdown as well, um so may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Can you, can you just tell, before you pause it, can you just tell us why, what the purpose is?
It's on the, it's on the agenda for the purpose of discussing the position of the Park and Rec Director and future programming.
But are we talking about a person or in general?
Um it's, that will be an executive session, that's why I'm going into executive session.
You you're not gonna tell me if it's an individual or. Like, are we talking about an individual or?
We could be, that's why I want to go into executive session.
Well, you could say yes or no, I mean, people could know that.
It's potential, yes, it's potential, I I I don't have a definitive, I I want to be able to discuss something in executive session, so. That's.
So do you have, I mean, I think, I think what's on the agenda is not enough information to the, for the public.
It's executive session that I'm asking to go into so we can have a discussion, then when we're done with that, we come. It's executive session that I'm asking to go into, so we can have a discussion, then when we're done with that, we come
Paul, you know, there are rules about when we, a a board can go into executive session for what reasons? So for example, one reason is if we wanna invite someone to give testimony on something, right? Um, so it might be of a sensitive nature, it might involve an employee, in that case, you know, we can do that. And then as soon as that person's testimony is over, they would have to leave the 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 executive session. And I just think that inviting, you know, uh, everyone that's here, and and no offense to anyone that's here, I mean, I think it's a lot of time people put in.
They ask to be in to an executive session, so that's why they are here.
But asking to be in executive session doesn't automatically, um, doesn't automatically mean that they that rises to the level of
An executive
Can I finish my sentence? I'm just saying that a request to come to this meeting in executive session in and of itself does not equate to meeting the the requirements under, under FOIA and under the, um, you know, public access rules. Um, and open access and transparency rules, so
Well, this pertains somewhat to the finalist, who I'd like to keep private.
Of course.
That's why I'm asking to go into executive session.
But Paula, I I I'm just saying, I don't know that, I don't know anything. I was hoping someone did that you would call me or tell me more when I asked you, I I, you know, it's, you know, I think that you know, this board was unanimous on that, right? And I I I'm, I totally get it and appreciate the commission's work, because we all want to do this right, and we all want to have um, to move forward in a way that's positive, and I I think we can do that without um, you know, violating the 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 rules, I mean, is there any portion of this that we can talk about in open session?
I don't think so at this moment in time, I'd like to keep the person confidential.
Of course, of course, no, that that definitely, so if you're telling me that you wanna talk about a person, then that, that's a different story. Um, you know, I don't know if we need, you know, everyone to come in.
I'm inviting them because they have been part of the process.
No, but Paula, you are inviting
I am asking them to be present in the executive session. I am chair, I am asking them to be present. Bob, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, it's a move.
And I'm going to second.
No.
Okay, you don't, we're going to executive session at eight oh four, and um Okay, we're coming out of the executive session at ten thirty six. Um, and the item uh last uh on the agenda is to act on advancing the hiring of the director of Parks and Recreation and future programming. Um, I'd like a motion to um dependent on the response of the finalist, um a motion to, uh, if she accepts to move forward with uh you know, getting her organized to move forward with uh programming, and then um we will have to potentially look at um, a third party vendor for summer camp as we are getting closer to that uh timeframe. So do we wanna do those in separate pieces, or is that okay?
If 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 a candidate accepts, then then proceed with hiring, and the town will run the summer camp. And
Well, will the third party, potentially with a third party vendor?
And then if not, we'll, we'll pursue a third party vendor to to attempt to offer a summer camp in uh in Bethany.
Okay, and then also there was, um if if the candidate says no, then we move forward with the reposting of the uh
That would be part of the uh, you making that motion, and I just made the motion.
Yeah, I mean, we've kinda put it together.
I think you have to clarify the language.
Um, so we need a a motion to um address if the finalist accepts. Then we allow them to move forward with um summer camp. And um
Paula, can you tell me what the deadline is for the acceptance?
I I asked her to potentially let me know tonight, but she lives in a meeting, so I don't know if she's
I'm not comfortable with an un- unlimited deadline.
I said to Yeah, okay, um and then, um if she should, the candidate says no, then um we have to repost.
And uh pursue a third party to offer
Third party for the
Program in Bethany Summer Camp, yeah. So moved.
Uh, second.
I'd like to amend the motion to give her until noon.
Noon tomorrow?
I guess I'm okay with that, I mean, we were just picking a deadline.
Okay.
Do you wanna stay till five?
Um, well, you know, let's say four, cause the office closes at four, so let's, let's do the end of the workday tomorrow at four.
Okay, so I'm gonna say no.
Alright, so we're changing, we're amending at the four.
The end of closed, business closed tomorrow.
He said four P M, right?
Correct, correct, that's what I know, this is All in favor? Gina, you were, no, right? Okay, alright, we, um, I will text the candidate again and let her know the change in the uh response time.
And then on the future programming part of it, um, I think the the Park and Rec Commission and the um candidates need to know what the, at least the board of selectmen's thought on policy is on whether Park and Rec would be the preference to run the before and after school program versus pursuing a a third party license, but to be run in Bethany.
Okay.
And um, so I'll, I'll move that um that the uh Park and Rec, the Park and Rec not, not be a preference to run the before and after school program, and then a third party licensed um provider uh be pursued to run uh before and after school in Bethany.
Knows that based on whether we do or do not have a director.
Would, I I think it's, it doesn't matter, e- either way, you don't have a director, you're not gonna run, it's it's it's, it's a it's a moot point, but I just think that um going, you know, going forward is, is this, is this a task for Park and Rec to take on or not?
So your, your preference is to not have the town run for before and after.
Right.
Okay, that's your motion, is to not have the town run it, but use a third party vendor?
Right, to have a before and after school program in Bethany.
But not run by the town.
Correct.
Right, third by vendor, okay, that's your motion. Yes?
Right, so that's, that's the preference, and if no one can be found, then that's, then then it'll be a Park and Rec thing, but that's what I'm saying, that the first choice would be our licensed uh third party.
Okay, um, Gina, are you seconding that?
Can you repeat it? Can you repeat your motion? You're, you're having layers, is that it?
He's moving his preference, moving to have a preference that the Park and Rec does not run the before and after school program. But be run by a
So yeah, so the, so the um the the town should coordinate, pursue a third party license program to be running in town, as as used to be the case.
So you're saying it's a motion for the Park and Rec before and after school program, is that it?
To not have the Park and Rec.
Right, for an after school program to not be run by Park and Rec, to be run by a a third party licensed provider.
And you're saying it's a motion to have the town look, uh, search for a third party organization that is licensed? Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
You want me to do a session, or we'll
Um, I have no, nothing else to
Anything, Gina, you wanna just? Okay.
All in favor? And I'm voting no. Okay, um, I think we have come to the end of our meeting, uh, a motion to adjourn. Forty three, we are adjourning. Uh, thank you, everyone who attended and was patient on um Zoom meeting. And yeah, you hung out with us till the end, so thank you again, you have a good night, what's left of it.